All right, please stand forth.
All right. The United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, the liberty and justice for all.
Who's reading?
Yeah, I'll read this one.
So if I could just make a comment to the Board of Education before you start your conversation, this is a continuation from the BAT meeting in terms of trying to adopt a budget. We do have next Tuesday on the table is a tentative Board meeting, and there is also tonight. Should the Board decide to vote and adopt a budget for tonight, then it would certainly be a tentative for next week if you wanted to get together and talk. One of the advantages, if in fact you agree on things that are proposed and you can come to an agreement tonight as a Board of Education for the budget, is that people are still in town. If in fact you wait until next Tuesday to adopt a budget, it is during spring break and many people will go away. If in fact you don't-
There's not that many people here tonight, so I don't know if you're gonna get 'em out here.
I don't know if they're gonna come either.
Well, y'all aren't here.
Well, there's a lot of you here tonight, Ashley, based on some of the other Board meetings. If in fact you wait until April 22nd to adopt the budget, most everything would still have to be in place by the 15th in order for us to meet the deadlines in the paper. So you really don't have tonight and next week to continue conversations to adopt until the 22nd. So your latest point of adoption is Tuesday of next week or tonight?
Barb can't pull an all-nighter?
Sure. Okay.
I'd like to start if I could and talk a little bit about the sports, and it's on top of the list, the JV sports. This is a cut that's not done in isolation in terms of the sports program. It impacts all the sports across the board. It impacts the number of kids that can be involved in sports. It impacts the development and the quality of their experience of the kids across the board, and it impacts our ability to compete with other districts that are not cutting JV sports that we have to compete with. And I don't think, are there other districts out there that are cutting JV sports that we're aware of?
Marissa might be able to better answer that one.
She's on a mission.
So the cost of that in terms of the value of these programs, I think outweighs the benefit that we're getting in terms of this relatively, we're talking about $63,000.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, the cost in terms of the value that we get from those programs outweighs the benefit of that relatively small savings. Or put another way, I think we're getting a heck of a lot for $63,000 in terms of the value that these kids get out of the programs. So I would support taking $63,000 from the reserves to keep these programs in place. And I think it was just a couple of years ago, we had a four-year plan, we were looking long-range and could see the storm on the horizon, and we were talking about how to use reserves. And the plan was in fact, in this year, to use 600,000 of the reserves. And we'd still be well under that. I think we'd be at, if we did this, we'd be at 500 or 510 or something.
You'd be just under six, so you'd be pushing it.
But I would support doing that. I think the value is justified, and next year we'll deal with next year. But as long as we can, I think we should try to keep these programs in place.
Yes, you can clap. About time. Just the perfect time.
Marissa, are other school districts cutting their JV teams?
At the last meeting we attended, nobody announced it. The most recent that I've heard is East Aurora's cutting a couple of their sports teams, about three of them, and Mayoryville was cutting their modified program if the district, not the district, the community did not fundraise $50,000.
And Springville, too, came in the news last week.
In Frontier, was it in the paper this weekend?
No, not the tire program.
Most of them were cutting a team or two. Mayoryville was the one that was going after the most in that house.
Wouldn't Frontier in the paper this weekend saying they're gonna cut their modified program?
They were in there, but there wasn't a definite, according to their district, isn't really releasing a lot of information, and according to their A.D., it might be more of a scare chapter. But they haven't, Frontier also has a couple of ninth grade teams, a couple, they have a lot more, I guess, levels, I would say, than us.
Marissa, wasn't it on your sheet here, it's baseball, girls softball, boys volleyball, girls volleyball, boys basketball, girls basketball, boys soccer, girls soccer, and one bowling coach? Is that correct? That's what would be included, and then the lacrosse?
You're missing two volleyball, girl volleyball, and boys volleyball.
I did have boys and girls.
I'm sorry, okay, let me go through them again.
Base, here, I'll take, girls field hockey, baseball, girls softball, boys volleyball, girls volleyball, boys basketball, girls basketball, boys soccer, girls soccer, and one bowling coach.
And one bowling coach in the latest addition as of today were JV-
Cheerleading coach.
JV winter cheerleading coach, and a JV girls lacrosse, and a JV boys lacrosse.
I'm gonna counteract what Colin had said. I think there's a lot of other programs, Colin, that are being, that are being cut that can parallel exactly what you said, that are really important to the kids, and-
Such as what?
Such as, a lot of the music has taken cuts severely.
We're still gonna have a school play. We're still gonna have music, but when you take away these teams, we're not gonna have those teams anymore. That's the difference. We're not cutting 10% from a JV team. We're throwing the team out and saying, "You kids will not be able to participate."
I just think that there's a lot of other cuts that are up here.
I'm gonna have to agree with Colin that, at least for this year, we could take the money from the reserves, and next year's budget is next year's budget, but we need to look hard. I do not like the idea. I don't like the idea of the whole combining and getting rid of, just because the kids will have nobody to compete with. And school sports is about competition, so it's not like it's a rec sport where everybody participates. This is where you learn competition and teamwork. So I agree with that for next year. I mean, maybe we should look hard as far as, like, cutting whole, I mean, if we have to, cut whole, like, all of cheerleading, gone. All of baseball, gone. But we have to look at the numbers. But for this year, if it's a doable thing, I agree with Colin.
Colin, you're taking me back. I didn't really look, but the technology teacher, I think that's an important, that's being cut out of there. The librarian, that covers all the kids. I think that's really important, too. We should bring that back, too, then.
The library's an add.
We're adding library.
Well, is it a full-time?
It's a .71.
And our technology, are we gonna be able to keep that technology teacher here? No, there's no addition for technology right now, but the librarian is a .71. I cannot sit here and say that I don't like the sports, 'cause I do agree with you how good they are for the kids, and I believe it, it's good for the rigor. I think it's great for the kids. I really am throwing this out for conversation that, that there's other things being-
Yeah, I'm not saying that we can do this forever. I mean, clearly, when these classes of under 100 kids get up here, we can't maintain all these sports. We won't have the bodies to fill out all the teams. But, you know, we should pare it down strategically, and if we're gonna offer sports, do it right for as long as we can. If we're gonna compete against these other schools that have modified JV varsity, we're at a competitive disadvantage. And you're also basically denying opportunity to freshmen and sophomores who are not gonna be able to make these teams. They're not gonna be able to have the experience, and they're gonna lose a lot. They're gonna suffer here. And I don't have any kids in JV or in any of the sports right now, for that matter, but I've seen what they can do for kids, you know? I see how important it is.
I just feel that the budgets, the athletic budget is over $400,000. I think it's huge, and I think it has to be taken a look at. I don't know, and I can't criticize Marissa for going right after these. These are really hardcore, the volleyball, the basketball, baseball, field hockey, and the lacrosse. It breaks my heart, 'cause I know that, that we've just brought that in in the last, what, six years? It's only been around for a short while, but I think athletics takes a huge chunk out of the academics. I know you need it. It's a balance that you have to have. And I don't participate in a lot of it, but I'm very proud of the school and what they've done. And I am looking at it as a budget. I'm not looking here for, against anything.
Well, what if we were, you know, we're starting at 63,000, and I think Marissa does a lot with a little right now. But what if we were to say, "We'll restore 50,000 of the 63," and hopefully you can keep all those teams, those JV teams, but if you can't, just do the best you can with $50,000 and keep as much of the JV program in place as you can? What about that?
I wonder if we just leave it at the 63 or 66 for this year, have Marissa come back in, as we're sharing right now with North Collins, maybe we could share more. And when talking with Marissa, she seems to have a plan for next year, and we're talking about combining services for the district, and next year's the year to do it, and this is clearly not the year to do it.
And Marissa, you do, where is she? She does a fabulous job. You really, really do. I'm really just looking at the budget thing. It does scare me to go over that amount, and I'm having a hard time with that. I think we're really privileged to have you here juggling everything that you do. But the shop teacher, I think, is important, and to bring back the sports and not the shop teacher, I question that. The other thing that I question is the German. If it's gonna be in-
Let's stay on the sports side for a minute.
Patty, Paul?
I would agree with Colin. I think that for 63 or 66,000, the amount of kids that are involved in their program, you know, is, that's well worth spending the money, to get, take that out of reserves to keep it going this year, and then to look at next year, and like Colin said, maybe start taking certain teams that aren't fully, you know, don't have enough players or, you know, don't have enough involvement, and cut those, like you said, scale back slowly.
Marissa, why did we not touch the modified? They're the feeder teams, is that correct?
It creates debate that you could have, and you can get different answers from various coaches. My personal opinion is not every seventh and eighth grader can make a JV team, and if we were to cut modified, you're telling every seventh and eighth grader that can't pass a very hard physical fitness test, that they either pass it, or they're done completely, where if you cut the JV, you kept the modified, every seventh and eighth grader would have a chance, the ninth and 10th graders would have to step up to the plate for a varsity sport. It is a debate.
Well, the other thing that I do question is the amount of kids that are on the teams, even with our small enrollment, Sandy. I know that, how many kids tried out for baseball, and how many made it?
We cut, I think, 15 from the baseball team.
You cut what?
15 from the modified baseball team. We cut 10 from the modified softball.
So you've already been making cuts?
We have been making cuts, not as much as a bigger district like Frontier, but on certain sports, you know, modified baseball. I took a number of phone calls from parents who did not understand why their kids did not make it. He kept their roster of 16. He had 32 tryout softball, modified softball. They kept 16. He had 26 tryout. Other sports, they make, keep everybody's modified lacrosse. There's 31 kids right now, and I'm keeping 31 kids. It comes down to the coach's preference.
And baseball, that wasn't modified, was it? That you were just-
The modified one was baseball, not modified varsity and JV. They didn't cut anybody. Their roster is smaller.
For baseball?
It depends whose level. If you, modified, we did cut. JV and varsity, we did not cut this year. He's got, I think, the varsity team has a roster of 13, maybe?
The JV kept everyone that came in? But if you cut the modified, then they don't have a chance to get to JV?
They don't, but it comes down to, again, like, the safety. Like, I already got hit once by softball in practice. I don't need to get hit again because of kids that can't grow. You know, it comes down to safety. It comes down to uniforms. It comes down to their roster size.
I don't know.
I think Barb has a point, especially looking at the technology teacher. Every year we don't add that half-technology teacher.
Can you speed up, please?
Yeah. Every year we don't add that half-technology teacher, we go further and further underwater with kids who weren't able to take it in the previous year. I mean, if we're talking adding more to the reserves we use, you know, we're gonna get into trouble not meeting the state requirements. Is that correct?
Right now, your students don't have to take a tech course to meet requirements. They can either take an ensemble, they can take studio and art, or they could take a tech class. It's a matter of offering kids what they want to. And so while we can meet the graduation requirement, it's not with what they're requesting.
Does the current tech teacher have the ability to teach all of these classes on an independent study for a kid, if they wanted to take a class as independent study?
If you had one or two students that wanted to take an independent study, like music theory, we can usually carry that. But our teachers all teach full-time, so there's no place in the day for them to bring in more than one or two kids who might want to do an independent study. So you wouldn't bring in 19 kids to do an independent study. And the other question, as far as the sports goes, is how many kids keep coming back on this 61,000 and are using that, and the kids that never make the modified, as soon as they don't make it in seventh and eighth grade, they're not gonna make the JVs in ninth and 10th. So you're really looking at a specific group of kids that's gonna float up to these, "I wanna keep the teams, Colin, don't get me wrong. Please, don't get me wrong." But I think there needs to be a debate on this, because the kids that aren't making it in seventh and eighth grade aren't gonna make it to the JV, and they're not gonna be on the team. And they're not gonna get this wonderful experience that you're talking about.
What's happening a lot is the kids that are getting cut, because of the way up for so many programs, they're able to go to a different sport. Lots of the modified baseball kids that got cut, they were able to go over to modified track, because there's not, there's not a set number on modified track. They do that a lot with swimming as well. You are right. Once you lose a kid from a sport, you will probably not come back.
They won't come back.
Some kids that will come back. I've had them, I've had them come back and try back out, and that's the same argument, and that's my fear with those, my personal fear with the nice varsity, the nice year that they get to playing time at the varsity level, I will probably lose, and the teams will go down that way. So it's a good debate on the sport.
I mean, when you look at this budget, there's one, two, three, four, five, six pages of just sports. And it's a $400,000 budget. No, I don't wanna cut JV. And that's last year's budget of 400,000.
Well, it's actually last now. Your budget is-
Is it down to 300? Let me see. Yep, I think it was.
You know, we also have an opportunity next year to start bringing in additional revenue through the new building use policy, and we haven't had that in the past, and that's something that may help this bottom line, and it's somewhat sports-related, too. We've got, you know, private organizations that are using our gyms right now that haven't been asked to pay anything in the past. Now they're gonna be asked to pay something, and that's something that can be applied to this.
Colin, do we have an idea of how much we could bring in?
Well, not having done it before, it's difficult, but we can look at how much time has been used by those organizations and-
And will the idea of putting, you know, charging, will that scare some of them away that have been using it, and, "Well, we're gonna be charged now, so we're gonna go someplace else"?
Good luck finding something as cheap as we're still making it for these people. I mean-
Okay, that's great.
But yeah, it might scare some of them off.
In the, as far as the sports budget, Marissa proposed $328,000 this year, and then you took the 61 off, and then if you put the 61 back on, it'll be 380, which is still 20,000 lower.
Here's what we decided, it's a $400,000 budget. It is, the budget is about a $400,000 budget. We are looking at ways to bring in revenue with the sharing of North Collins. We are looking at charging other groups next year for using, are using our building, which is gonna start July 1st. We are also gonna be charging admission at our home timeless for indoor sports as well, which will be something new to try to bring in revenue, to try to help the budget. Yeah, between about $3, $3 for your basketball games, your wrestling games, your swim meets, which we know most of, we do workout contractual things on that, but we will do it, and there's the building.
So do we get our, do we get our tech guy back, too, then? Well, just preliminary figures is, Tom and I were just taking a look at this. Your, a .34 tech teacher is $24,000. We've had conversations about a .34, and we've had conversations about a .5 or a .51 tech. So it's 24,000 on a .34 tech, which is two periods. I think where I'm going with the tech is the kids that don't make the sport do really well with tech. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, and I do know that, again, we have a fabulous sports team here, and Colin, I don't wanna see it go away. So if we can bring revenue in, we haven't really put that in the budget, have we, Tom?
For revenues, well, we certainly have now. In terms of building use, we haven't put that in.
Building use revenue, that's what I'm talking about.
No, we're still working on these structures, so we haven't put that in yet.
And the other thing I really have my sights on, Colin, is, if we get any, any of the teachers do retire, I'm, you know, where are we gonna put that to? What's important to us? What is important to Eden? What's important to us? Is it the sports? Is it the tech?
I think it's giving every child an opportunity, and if we get rid of JV sports, it's eliminated an opportunity for almost half the kids in this.
Okay, this is gonna raise Tom's blood pressure a little bit, but what if we say 50,000 to the JV sports and a .34 tech? So then you're talking about 75,000 or 80,000?
A .34?
From reserves?
A .5 tech teacher, roughly 35,000.
Yes, without, what was the 3, 4?
Excuse me?
The first one you said, the .
Was a .34, roughly 32.8 with benefits. Okay, you gotta add all your benefits on top of it.
So 33K plus 50.
So that's 82.
33K.
So the kids, the kids that have requested tech for next year would support a .34?
No. It's a beginning.
That'll give them at least two or three of the classes, right?
A .34 is two sections of anything, of something. And Sandy, what about the, that gap elimination? Does it, what's the future of that? Are they gonna be giving that back? Is that what- I just turned the mic to Tom on that.
They already gave money back for the gap elimination adjustment.
What about next year?
Next year, they're competing between the executive branch, legislative, and the Senate as to when to end the GEA.
So anywhere from two to five years.
The shortest version was two, which means we would still have one next year. The longest version was another five years.
I would, I would support Colin's, what he just suggested, the $50,000 to sports, and then the .34 tech teacher out of the reserves to keep, to add that tech and to keep the JV sports.
Scott has had a deal?
Well- Oh, man, we're cutting deals here.
Marissa, for next year, I mean, I know you talked briefly about that you have ideas for next year, saving money and whatnot. Do you think, what do you think next year that you possibly could save the district?
I think-
With keeping this program the way it is?
I think all of us are always looking at ways in the future, and Mrs. Anselm said that the next year's even may worse, so I think we have to start thinking now. One of my ideas, obviously, with sharing of services, is with North Collins. They have a, I have to be careful in what teams I can merge, because you can't cut taxpayers, which I went over before, but teams that we don't cut anybody, maybe we could share with those, a golf team. We don't cut anybody for golfing, so if we merge with North Collins, maybe either North Collins picks up the cost of the coach, or we pick up the cost of the coach, and somehow that way, cheerleading, if we merged with cheerleading for that. And look at some sharing of administration, as far as, not myself or whoever in the athletic director role, but you share an administrator. So those are thoughts that are always, we're looking at, but again, those are a year away, but those are some thoughts that we're looking at. Definitely sharing of teams, as I know that our district is getting smaller, you do need to make cuts. I can't have, keep coming to you every year saying, "Save my sport, save my sport," without giving you something back. So those are some of the ways that we've come up with, I've just been brainstorming on different ones.
Marissa, if you could just back up, and I know you and I talked about this today, and we don't even have the legal answer to it. What we do know is that on some of the tournaments, that we've dropped kids off, and the bus has not stayed.
Correct.
The conversation that you and I had earlier, though, would be about doing that on regular games.
Yes. I would much rather save my teams for my kids to play instead of doing transportation. Right now, school law says that if you transport to a game, you must transport back unless you have written notice from a parent. When Mrs. Anselm came last year, she approached the school lawyer on my behalf and asked if we could have parents transport their kids to and from the games for a limited amount of contests. The school lawyer said, "Yes, if you have written document." I, instead of keep cutting teams, I would rather do, if you want your child to play a sport, I know you can't get there at 4:30, for a 3 o'clock, maybe to drop them off, but you would certainly be there by 6 o'clock to pick them up. Maybe we go to a transport, drop off only. Obviously, there would be some safety concerns with that. Contest, which would need to be worked out, and that's something I would like to approach the school lawyers with, because I would much rather have the teams there instead of paying for transportation. Again, just some brainstorming ideas. There's a number of teams that don't have roster sizes, track, cross-country, swimming right now, cheerleading, golf, that we might be able to interest North Collins, and maybe North Collins will be interested in letting us use their turf, so I can save some of Dave's guys the hours of work that they're putting in, and maybe we can go over there and use some of theirs. But again, this is all stuff that needs to be researched a little bit more and looked at. So those are some of the ideas.
How about bowling and tennis?
Bowling, tennis would be, bowling unfortunately, no, because right now, the, bowling is a very expensive sport due to what Eden Bowling Alley charges us, and right now, the other closest bowling alleys, it'll cost us money to get there, and they're, they have Hamburg there and stuff. So I can only afford 12 bowlers on each team, so we actually do make cuts. We make about 15 cuts for girls and about 20 cuts for boys. I did have Lake Shore interested in merging with us, but I can't cut Eden kids to take that. So I really have to look at the teams that we don't make cuts at.
Okay.
So it really would be your, tennis is definitely one of them, though, that I would. Again, North Collins previously was under the direction that they did not wanna combine sports, because they have such a stellar soccer program and softball-baseball program, but now I think you have a new regime there that is interested.
Where?
At North Collins. So I think you have a new regime there that's interested in merging even more sports. So I would like to-
Well, now is really the time to start it.
Yes.
Because that's what you did last year, you were starting to talk about the football.
Yeah, we actually have been talking about this for about five years.
Really?
And I, we've been shut down every year, so we just keep going at it. So we'll just keep trying. So we'll just keep trying.
Yeah.
So we'll see whether they'll merge with us. But now there's an incentive to merge, so that sounds even better.
Well, the other question is, is, how's your blood pressure?
Okay.
If we, if we, if we take that amount of money out, I feel it's a little bit risky to take that amount out.
What I, what I would say to everyone here in terms of, again, just the reserve parts, that now puts us at over $1.1 million. Last year, we were at 713,000. That's reserves and fund balance. So thank you very much. By doing that, we'd be using roughly 10% of our total reserves next year. I would ask the board, is there another area where we could have cost savings? Because what we just did is we put back 50,000 into athletics, we put in additional 24,000 for a .34 tech teacher, that's $75,000. Is there another creative way that we can think to possibly...
I want to add back more into transportation.
I thought it was 30. Uh, it's 24.
That's a .34 teacher. If you're looking at a .5 teacher.
I think we should bus the young kids for GOP in elementary instead of...
It's 35,000 for .5 or 24.
Wait, Mike, we got two different conversations going on, two completely different topics.
I mean, we're only, we got stuck on sports, but I still believe that we need to bus the young kids to GOP and in elementary. I mean, I don't have a problem with not, you know, the high school people walk into school in the one-mile radius, but you're talking with the weather we have and no sidewalks and...
Mike, I do have a question for you. Did you ever walk to school?
No.
I rest my case.
I live in a different state.
I rest my case.
I grew up in a different state that didn't allow you to walk to school.
It's safe. There's a lot of benefits from it for the kids. There's a lot of benefits that you don't really understand and get.
Well, I also, I know that through my neighborhood alone, there's two buses that comes through there that are full. And I know there are pre-K kids on there that you're going to be having walk in the snow. And hypothetically, their parents might have to work and their grandparents are watching them, which are not going to be able to walk. And as soon as one of those kids gets hit trying to cross over School View Road at that corner there, where there's a blind spot, where some people come wiring around the road here, we're going to have a lawsuit and we're going to have other things.
Well, I do have on my list here a bunch of things that I think that the board needs to address as far as safety training for the kids and crosswalks, signage. We don't have hardly any signage at all, we have to go to the town for that. Speed limit, there's no speed limits. Someone had mentioned some of the, not retired officers, but what the reserve...
Reserve officers.
Officers turn the lights on at certain time in the morning when the kids are coming through. And when the GLP kids come through, they have to be at school at quarter after 8:00 or 8:30, I'm not quite sure of the time. Most people are in...
Sandy, what time does the GLP start?
Our high school kids come in about 7:15, 7:20, and our GLP kids would come in exactly one hour after that.
Yeah, 8:15. So, I mean, if they were coming in at seven, if the elementary and kindergarten kids were coming in at 7:15, I would be weary because it would be dark.
I know, I drop my kid off at, some mornings when I drop him off at school at like 20, 25 after. So they start at, what, 8:30?
Lauren, what time do the GLP kids actually start classes?
8:30 they're locked, they start on the...
Okay.
So they're not getting off the bus until 8:30.
Right, so they sit for a while. Lauren Carter, what do you think about the kids walking, the kindergarten kids walking to school?
Well, I think we're picking areas that they can, that are safe for them to walk to, I understand, whether it's sidewalks and their walking. Like, you're asking me, and I concur to this, for my kid to have to walk to a bus stop, so...
There's a difference walking to the bus stop and crossing, walking with no sidewalks.
Right, my kids walk on sidewalks to a bus stop, so I'm used to it, they've done that since kindergarten. So I'm used to that model. I mean, I would be concerned if they were crossing without some kind of supervision, so I guess we would look at, have to see what the model's going to be. But I mean, I also understand, I mean, they're, we have to complete it.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, I...
What's the cost difference between...
I can't imagine a parent quit playing their tennis at all. I think they're all going to drive to the office, most of them drive anyways.
That, most of them drive anyways, that's funny.
That's what I was just going to say. When I drop my kids off, it's a steady stream of vehicles into the Main Street Elementary, and at dismissal, it's the same thing, picking kids up, so...
Yeah, I'm just, and as Rose here, I mean, she knows there's two buses come through the neighborhood and they're full. So the parents aren't driving these kids. High school level, yes, they are.
They're full because of how she routes them, so we get state aid. Remember what she said, that she has those buses go outside and then pick up kids in this area so that we can get aid on those buses? Because if they only pick up the kids in that area, there would be no state aid for the bus.
And furthermore...
Still don't get state aid for the bus that picks up those kids there.
Yeah, because she routes it so...
Do we get state aid for the people in my neighborhood?
No.
You will, right. But we're still getting state aid on the gas and the driver.
But she, she routes it so those buses come from outside with kids already on it.
So the bus is getting aid.
So the bus is getting aid. So that's why it's full. It's not full from just your neighborhood, it's full from pulling kids from other areas, too.
Mike, Mike, the other consideration is, besides the kids that are right across the street and might have to walk, the other consideration are the kids that are coming from the Boston Hills and sitting on the bus for the last 45 minutes to the school, it'll lessen their time sitting on the bus and going home.
And also, the concern is if we do away with the service, we have a bus proposal up for vote, people are sitting there saying, you know, why am I going to approve, pay money, taxes to buy buses when my kids aren't riding the bus?
I'm willing to take the...
You're going to have a negative feedback on that, and there's a chance that a bus vote will go down. And what implication does that have to the district? A bigger implication than this fee right here.
What's the likelihood of getting help from the town as far as crossing guards or having...
You know, as I mentioned last week, is crossing guards are an extra cost to a town, but having police officers who are on duty stop and help kids cross or help traffic move, I have had work for me, especially in the morning when it's, it might be a little bit darker. So I have not had that conversation with them because the board hasn't taken, you know, a decided stand on this one, but we know that the police are out there, and I know that they're always really, really good to us.
What does it take to actually get the speed limit reduced?
Well, you know, this is a conversation that I had earlier today, is that we know that the state has to approve any type of signage on Route 62, and there is signage in North Collins, so we know it can be done. When I first got here a year ago, I was talked out of signage by Mr. Mags, basically, because the conversation had been had more than once, just that there's enough signs around that it would just clutter up more signs. But we know that North Collins has it on 62. School View would be basically the length of School View, since your school is the length. So it's different than just one school building, like you might see in a town, other than Eden, where we would be looking at the entire length of School View as a town signage, which would definitely be more than one sign. Because you can't even tell that you're in front of a school if you're not in front of GLP or elementary.
Shouldn't that be a school zone anyhow? Because it is, the school owns the property on the entire side, and then when we get down to the high school, we own on both sides of the road?
I know that it has come up more than just me bringing it up last year.
So that should be a school zone anyhow, just because...
That's in my list for them to do regardless of what we do with busing.
Dave Rice brought it up when Alex Hutz got hit here last year.
Two years ago?
Yeah, last year. I think it was last year, last school year. Indicated the length of the road is what the issue is.
That's right.
So you can't have a whole road, a school road, you have to have certain sections. Now, that's what he indicated at the time, whether or not we can get an exception from the state.
Well, the state wouldn't be School View.
It would be an exception for the town.
The town is School View. The town is School View. The state is 62.
So it's a town road, so we would have to go to the town in regards to that.
Could, could we get a variance? I mean, they have variances for others.
Well, the conversation I will have with them, it's on the list for me to talk again with Glenn Ellis about it, regardless of what you decide to do here.
And I think Mike Felschall would probably be...
John McCarthy and I had a conversation about it a year ago, and they're definitely in agreement.
Yeah, the chief of police, I think, would have a lot to say on, you know...
Could be a revenue stream to the police force, too. Force and the speed limit.
They could pay for the crossing rates.
It's been happening the last three weeks, so be careful on School View. I just wanted to clarify, I'm going to ask Tom to clarify the numbers. I think that Paul asked a question about a tech teacher. I'm not sure if you asked about a .34 or a .5.
Right now, on the table is a .34.
Okay.
For two sections.
And a .34 approximately is $24,000.
And that's benefits and everything.
With benefits, correct.
So then we're not going to the 80, we're now back down...
It was a .5, that was actually on the...
Right, at least, when we first began this process months ago, it was .34, then it was increased to .5. We took that out altogether, so now we would be adding in another $24,000 if we did that.
For a .34.
Plus the 50 for...
Plus the 50 for sports. And then if you do anything with transportation, you'd be adding that into.
So then we're looking at not 82, like we had said, it would only be closer to 75, taking...
That's 75 without transportation.
Out of the reserves.
That's correct.
I'd be okay with that.
I would be okay with that.
What about transportation? Do we want to take anything?
What's the cost difference, Rose, for just the GLP? I know that we did a last meeting, we had the cost of just GLP and elementary cost, and then there's a high school cost, all of them.
Mike, I can give you a general on that.
There wasn't much, though.
It's, yeah, it's just if we don't do anything with the mileage, it's going to be probably roughly another 47,000. Because the way she layers buses and everything like that, the savings will go from 97 probably down closer to 50. And that's a rough estimate. So you would add about another 47,000 on it.
For what?
As to when we take out of reserves.
No, 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 47 for what?
If we do no limitation.
If you just did the elementary and GLP bus run.
If you want.
If you just did the GLP and elementary and the high school had to walk within the mileage, including...
So junior, senior high school walkers?
Right.
Yep. So that's 121,000 we're up to.
I mean, I think the kids can walk.
I'm not, I'm not in favor with that either. Now I am having tremors. That's a lot.
I think that any age group...
I'm having tremors with the other 80-some thousand we're adding back in, because next year now, we're $600,000 in the hole, and we're digging, we're just going to have to have possible massive cuts next year on top of this. So I mean, we could sit here and...
You know, Mike, you're really right. We're either going to, we're either going to walk slowly into the freezing cold water or we're going to jump in.
Well, I won't say necessarily jump in, I mean, even with these cuts, we're still walking slow.
We're walking slowly in.
I mean, it's with these, with the cuts that's listed here, we're walking slowly. And we're, now we're just, we're going to be basically holding our nose and jumping off the deep end next year. Because, I mean, on average, we've been increasing our debt about $1 million a year.
Right now.
So, I mean, we're, I mean, possibly $1.6 million in the whole next year.
Well, what do you, what do you think of this?
So where are you going to get that money from next year?
Well, here you go. I'll, I'll give you some revenue. If we go ahead, if the board goes ahead and tries to get some of that money from the free and reduced lunches, you...
It would be the year after. Would not?
It, it doesn't matter. It's, we would be in that direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
We would, I think the board should step up and say, I want it started tomorrow. Something that we can put in...
Oh, Barb, that's already on our list to do, but it's not going to help in the budget process for this year and next year. So it's already there, it's like the signage. We're not waiting to do it. So the board doesn't even have to tell Tom to do it, we already know what we need to do.
So that's already in place.
Yep, yeah.
And if we, and you're predicting about $1 million, Tom?
Right now, $1,400,000.
So let's say we get 500,000. That'll cover all of our...
Oh, you're talking if we get additional state aid from increasing free and reduced?
Yeah.
Correct.
But it's two years.
Sandy, I hear you, it's two years.
Yeah, but it depends on what it goes up to. If it goes up to 30%, you probably would get about another million. If it goes up to 20% or 22%, you're not going to get a million, you're going to, I mean, just proportionally less.
So the state won't reimburse us for past years?
No, 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 they don't do that, no. I wish they would.
You owe us. What financial impact if the bus thing goes down to the district?
If the bus proposition goes down?
If the bus proposition goes down.
And the budget passes?
Yes.
We lease or we do without the buses. I mean, there, it's, if the budget passes, I mean, that's obviously first and foremost.
Right.
We obviously would want to have the buses. It makes it tighter. However, I would say with the way that Rose has scheduled the runs with the additional walking, if the bus proposition were to go down, we hope it would not, obviously, but if it were, we have less buses in use because of the way they're layered, because now there are less kids that are actually being picked up. So could we make it through? We probably would be able to make it through.
And didn't you say something about that you were going to do a survey at the beginning of the year on what students are going to ride the bus?
Yes.
So we can have an accurate count of actually how many kids?
Yes.
Because you are finding that some are driving...
No, because it's a new law.
Yep.
That's a new law, last year, Rose, on being able to get actual ridership. Didn't that start last year or the year before? Two years ago, so we haven't been able to do that prior.
So the two things that we're actually doing, and just to refresh everyone's memory, number one, free and reduced lunch population, of sending out surveys to every family, asking them to return it, yes or no? Because right now, we give it to them and those who want to return it to and those who don't.
Are we going to put a letter on it and educate people?
Yes, absolutely. So that was the first part, yes, Colin.
Yeah, I think there should be more than that. There needs to be an education process out there so people understand the significance of that.
I agree.
The significance of this free and reduced lunch, that if...
Could we have, could we have something in the school where we actually invite them to come in and hear and talk about how this impacts the district?
Or even put it over the phone system before you send those out, to say, hey, by the way...
We could do a global connect with that.
Yeah, in these difficult times, whether you want the free lunch or not, it's important that you.
Send that back.
And the second thing that always discussing is, as well is, we have to route based on all kids, not knowing whether or not they're actually going to take it. So we have to plant a seed for them. But now the law has changed and Rose, correct me if I'm wrong at all, I'm not an expert on that, but the law has changed to say that if we get, send something out to parents and have them return it, saying my kid will or will not, two years ago, that we can then plan on those kids not riding us, which then frees her up for less ridership and less buses. So that we already have planned to do for next year as well. Correct?
Yes.
Concerning transportation, there's, there's a lot that we have and it's.
Yeah.
That can be done to mitigate any risk.
Did we, did we look, I know y'all were doing a study about possibly outsourcing a Fisher and so forth. Did that come back?
It was approximately $50,000 a route.
How much?
Approximately $50,000 a route.
$50,000 a route.
$50,000 a route?
Yes, per route.
A year? What does that compare to?
It's really, believe it or not, not a lot different. It's fair.
But is there a difference?
There is a small difference, yes.
Savings or a cost?
Savings. There is a savings, yes.
But once, you, you really need to talk to districts that have done that.
Oh, yeah. I'm not suggesting, don't, don't get me wrong.
Because, you know, once we don't have the buses anymore, we're at their mercy. So the next year, the contract can be whatever number they want to give us because we have no choice once that contract's out. And I know from districts that do use that, that they really control a lot of it. Well, no, you can't go on the field trip starting at that time. We don't have our buses back from the runs yet. Or we can't pick those sport teams up until, so the sports have to start at X number because we're delivering kids back home. So, you know, it takes a lot of control of what is done in the district and puts it in, well, this is a timetable that we're going to deal with.
I don't want to do it. I'm just thinking if there's a cost and we have to cut academics or something like that, then that's, you know, we're not in the business of busing kids. We're in the business of educating them, so.
Well, I'm looking to see, is there any other areas we haven't thought of in terms of savings? So whether it's PR, whether it's legal, whether there are any areas.
I do want to look at the German.
What do you want to talk about?
I'd like to know about the German. And from what you've said, last year, there were eight kids that requested it.
So on average, there've been 13 students that have been interested in taking German. And that 13, for the most part, would stay at 13 till about German four. And the same thing happens in French, and then the number drops down a little bit. And then the number stays steady there for German or French at the college level or new staff.
So how many languages do we offer right now? We, we offer Spanish, French, and German.
That's right.
And didn't we have like a conversation with the?
You had a major committee formed a couple of years ago to take a look at foreign language offerings in the school district.
And we were proposing to cut that.
Cut what?
And then it's brought back, German.
So this year, the numbers for German seven were about eight, and so German seven did not run. That was not part of your budget cuts for last year. It was just part of a cut after the budget was approved because the numbers in German didn't, weren't high enough to run the course. So that means that because we didn't run German seven this year, next year, German eight won't run because there's nowhere, you know, there's no kids feeding into it. So this year, there was no recruitment for German, but 29, but, but the numbers do still float out there about what courses people might take because there was no decision to cut German. It was simply on the table as a possibility. And 29 students going into seventh grade have signed up to, as an interest for German next year. Does that mean that some of our kids in French, Spanish, or German might change their mind? They could. They're sixth graders. But those numbers are twice, twice higher, if that's a good phrase, than they have been in the recent years.
I, I just feel it's a little peculiar. And we already do offer two languages. And you, you told us, Sandy, that this would also be an additional burden for the budget next year because we'll have to.
You would have to fund German eight.
Right. So I, I propose not going with the German and, and not allowing it.
So if in fact those 29 students in German are, are there or not there, the savings for German seven this year don't really, they count as a savings, but all kids in seventh grade have to take a foreign language. So they have to go somewhere, okay?
Let me ask you this. If there were only two languages, would it burden the, the teachers that are there right now?
You would increase Spanish by a section or French. I think your French numbers are probably a little bit more in line with a course, but your Spanish, I know, was floating right on the edge. Let me just look.
But last year, they had roughly the same class size went to Spanish and French, correct?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Last year, when we had no German section, or this year, we had no German section.
We increased Spanish by a section.
So, yeah, so.
We did.
Continue to do.
Where the savings come from is when the kids get a little bit older. Because then you can have a class of 28 or 29 as opposed to a class of eight. French one is 33. German one is 29. Spanish one is 40. So right now, you're looking easily at two sections, a Spanish 1B, so two sections of 20. If German runs, you'd be looking at one section of about 27, 28, depending. And French one running at 33, you're not going to run a class at 33. So either kids are going to move into some other language base or you're going to run two sections of 16. And that's where the cost starts to go up as you start to increase the number of language offerings.
Would you recommend, what, what would you recommend dropping the German or?
I'm baffled at the moment.
You're baffled?
I am because I was pretty comfortable if there were only eight or 10 kids that were interested in a German class of recommending to you to not run it. But if there's truly 29 students that are interested in German, then it's an equal amount to French.
And I do believe just in terms of salary, you're trading one for the other next year.
That's right.
What you do see, so let's say if, if you drop German, you're going to have to pick up on Spanish next year. But what you find is in years down, the exponential savings because now you're not going to have the Germany. And so those kids will cycle through, so there will eventually be a savings, if that makes sense. And as the kids in Spanish, as they get older, you're going to have less kids in Spanish each year anyway, so.
Well, I, I'm looking ahead to the next year and having to budget that extra German in there, and I'm not, I'm not willing to do that.
So you're, I mean, I guess I'm kind of confused because you're, you want the technology, the .34, but you don't want the German.
Correct.
And kids want both.
Pardon?
I said, kids want German. They want German now.
It's very peculiar how it came around this year. For years, it's been single digits or maybe in teams.
See, when I was in high school, it was, that was probably one of the most popular languages.
But you're not in high school anymore, Mike.
Yeah, well, it wasn't that long ago.
Well, I don't, Barb, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's anything, I don't think there's anything peculiar about the 29.
I mean, there's a difference between what you want and what you. Well, I mean, what, well, we have a technology program as it is right now, and now we're saying, let's just get rid of German.
There's nothing peculiar about the 29 in German. It's just simply that when kids filled it out, they were probably explained about French, Spanish, and German, and that's the way it rolled out.
Again, I, I don't want to support next year having to increase the budget for the German. And that's my reasoning behind not following through with the German this year.
You don't know what the enrollment for grade seven next year is going to be. It could be down to eight, and you may have to drop.
Drop it again.
German seven.
And then the teacher could teach German eight.
I, I think with the budget situation, I, I think it's one of the ways, one of the things that we should eliminate.
I wasn't here for the, the one meeting. Whenever you look, I'm going back to the sports. It's almost $400,000 for all of our sports. Was it looked into as far as, okay, here's your budget, 200,000, just, just, you get $200,000 for whatever sports that you can do. Did we look into that instead of 50 sports? Why don't we just do 20 sports well? Was that something we looked into instead of 50 different sports? I don't know how many there are.
It was, it was a philosophical question about whether we cut teams or we cut a tier. And Marissa, you can answer differently, but my understanding in all the conversations I had is that it was a philosophical conversation about cutting a tier like JV as opposed to specifically cutting teams. Save the teams, let the kids play. So no. So the answer to your question is no. There was some conversation about cutting teams, which is why you see lacrosse up there for varsity and for modified. But you have to be careful when you cut at budget times because Title IX will kick in.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can't just cut a team. Cheerleading you can because it's not, it's a club, but you can't just cut like field hockey. Marissa will tell me this 100 times. You can't just cut field hockey as a girls' team because then you have to do something with boys. And in the fall, that's football. In the spring, you have more things to play with, more, more sports to play around with. Now winter. Okay, so no, not really.
I just wasn't here for that. I was wondering why the whole thing.
It was, it was a conversation, but not long.
Tom, you had mentioned legal. And I'm no education lawyer, but I have helped with some things. There was a collection thing that I helped defend, and I would be willing to do that. I mean, if you could take another look at that line and see if there's some things we refer out that I could do, like defending collection things, I would be willing to do that.
One of the things.
Pro bono.
So as a conflict of interest, you probably couldn't do it pro bono, but as opposed to calling our school board attorney, we could, we could turn to your advice as an attorney first. I know this year we did turn to Erie Two, but Erie Two can't help us with everything because that's not what they're set up to do. So we could certainly take a look at that and just simply say we're not going to call our school board attorney on, on many of the things that we have. Whenever we have a settlement issue, an IP issue, certainly our retirement incentive this year was a cost to us. Those type of things, if we can narrow those down, would certainly help us too.
It'd be anywhere from 10 and 20 would be my guess. Somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Can you go the higher number?
We could go the higher number. We just have to make sure we refer a lot of things not to call in then, so. Ring, ring.
Hey, Mike, did you take German?
No, I didn't.
I'm asking the right questions tonight.
So just for the sake of, of me understanding where we are, because I'm really glad that everybody is talking about it, and it's, and it's really nice to see all of the board members having conversation, but if you could come back and take a look at that salmon sheet and make some affirmative decisions on some so we can at least cross those off that, and if you have to vote, that's up to Mike Burns to decide as president how to go about this. But we need to narrow down where we are. And right now, I don't feel like I have a good, a good understanding of anything on this page because some things we haven't talked about at all.
I'm assuming the ones we didn't talk about, they're okay with.
Right. I don't think we want to do a line by line.
No.
I think we pulled out the pieces we wanted to talk about.
So we'll do then 50 for sports.
So I'm just going to, I'm just going to come through and I'm going to say that a lack of conversation would tell me that, that the board is okay on the extra 10% for the, the extra 20% on the extracurriculars, the extra 20% on the junior, senior high school musical, the extra 20% on the elementary musical. The loss of the day from March 19th is a recess day. Obviously, you're not going to disagree on the furlough. ETA still needs to vote on the 105H. And so what I've left out is the sports, the transportation, the tech, and the German to continue conversation on.
Sports, if I heard correctly, you had talked about 50.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just vote then.
Yeah, I would, I would support with the changes that we've talked about, the 50 for the sports, the .34 for tech. And then.
Do we leave transportation alone or not?
Yeah.
Leave it alone.
Okay, so you don't touch that. And then you take 20 out for legal.
And I would support.
And what was the sports?
That leaves you just under 1.1 million out of reserves and fund balance.
I would support that.
Yeah, second.
All right, all in favor? I oppose.
Now, now from, also in terms of voting for the budget, though, there's very specific.
Are we voting for the budget here? No, we're voting on, we're going to vote on.
Changes to this.
Okay.
We don't have to vote on that. Well, we were going to get a consensus, though. Who wants this? Okay, then. I mean, basically, we vote on the budget. I mean, you don't have to vote on line item, they're, they're taking them out.
So Tom, tell us, because this is my first year.
So the way in terms of voting for the budget, using our wording from last year, we approve a 2014-15 budget recommended motion that the 2014-15 budget in the amount of, the amount that we have on here is 26,396,477.97. We've changed things around on that sheet, represents a 2.63% increase, be approved as presented.
So what is the new number with the 50?
It's the same number. You move things around where you're taking it from, the number is, hasn't changed.
We're now pulling it out of reserves. Now pulling it out of the reserves.
Yeah, you're using reserves to make up the difference.
So the, so all we're voting on is the very bottom number?
You vote on the bottom number, the 26,396,477.
Knowing where some of it is coming from?
Correct. So now, instead of taking all that money from the sports and also with the tech, we're now taking more from reserves. It's still the same dollar amount. You haven't changed your dollar.
So that's all we have to do is vote on the bottom number?
You guys vote on the dollar amount for the budget. That's correct.
Marissa?
Yeah?
Real quick, since it's roughly $13,000 less that you will be receiving, what implications does that have? To the JV program?
You can say, I don't know. It's a good answer. Still look at the bowling coach. I think I can make that do. I would still have to come up with 10,000.
Transportation, perhaps, like the drop offs to the game?
We got to check the legality of that. I can't do the drop offs this year because of lawyers. I really would have to go back and look at where it would come from right now.
But, but this, this year is, this year is already paid for. We're talking about next year.
Yes, I know that, but I would still, to get the lawyer fees and everything in place by then, or I don't know if I could make that.
I, I think it's fair to say we don't know.
I don't know that.
Okay, that, and you don't have to try to get beyond that, Mr., if you don't know, you don't know.
Is there a possibility that? Is it a possibility that you still have to cut some teams?
It is a possibility.
Could you use fundraising to fill the gaps?
I could.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I train them to say they don't know. So when they don't know, they don't know.
My concern with that is that a team gets still to be cut. And what's fair to say who makes that decision of what team gets cut if we, she can't fund all teams?
I don't think any of this is about fair.
Yeah, it's, it's not fair, Mike.
But it's not the board that's trying to be unfair.
But I mean, who's to say the bowling JV team gets cut over the volleyball team?
I don't, I don't, I don't really want to look at it that way. I still don't know my answer. I'm all about equal opportunity for everybody, and it would be in the best interest of the kids. If I could make it work with less supplies, I definitely would do that first and foremost. Obviously, 13,000 is a heck of a lot less than what I was originally anticipating. So if I can save as many teams as I possibly can, I would definitely do that. And I would not attack one program after another. That's the last thing I want to do. So first and foremost, I would look at supplies. I would try to limit as much stuff as possible while fundraising the rest of it.
Tom, have we heard, and I know this is kind of off, but naming a field like, you have the football field being sponsored by.
Colin Campbell Memorial Field.
Well, we can't do memorial. Memorial, you can't do that.
Wow.
We got that on tape.
Yeah.
Not in this current year's budget, but in last year's budget, there was certainly some legal conversation that came our way about what we can and cannot do in terms of logos and sponsorships.
And can we now also look at some of our reduced legal costs and questions to our, you know, if team costs.
Pro bono.
On the end there to see if we can also, I won't put it in the budget for next year.
It's not still around, yeah. It's a memorial field, yeah.
Walk into your car, you're going to run over.
Does everybody feel pretty clear about what you disagreed to?
I think so. Hold on a minute. What?
Would you, would you please just go over the balance fund and the fund again because I, how much we used last year compared to this year?
Okay, here's what we're looking at right now. We talked 50,000 for sports.[1598.71] talked about taking out $20,000 for legal fees. So that difference there is additional 54,000. So what we do with that 54,000, we add that now to the fund balance. So 1041, 120, .14. We have 54,000 to that. We're now at 1095, 120, .14. Really close to the 1.1 million dollar mark. Last year, we were at 713.
But what part of that is out of reserves and what part of it...
It depends where we end the year.
We don't know where we're going to end the year yet.
Yeah, it depends. If we end the year about 500,000 left over that we can take for fund balance, you're about 600,000.
But we don't know.
So we heard earlier that you're pretty good at predicting, and those were the exact words that were used, so.
I would say that we'll be taking 600 out of reserves as opposed to 150 last year. It is a significant jump.
So we're going to be taking about 600,000 out of reserves?
I will do everything I can because from my standpoint, my, part of my job is to protect this district, make sure as solvent as possible. So we have funds left over. You will see, I will tell you right now, it's possible in August, I'll be back here saying, "We ended up better. Let's put more money back into reserves." And if I can do that, I most certainly will. And I won't apologize for that because we want to keep our reserves at a healthy level.
So, and not just on the reserves too, but basically that means that money won't roll forward into...
Right.
Okay, year after year too, so.
Well, it still rolls into, even if we build up the reserves, we're still seeing now, we're already starting the year at a million, almost one.
1.1.
Dedicated, using that, unless we reduce our expenses some other way. It's one of the two. You either increase revenues or decrease expenses. One of the two.
All right, Colin.
So if I...
You be busy.
But Mike and, Mike, you had...
Well, I was just going to make sure that we get Colin reelected because if he's reelected, we can't take the 20K.
I was just going to say, would you still do it pro bono either way?
He's still going to be the lawyer.
Yeah, that's true. I'll still be around.
As long as he's not memorial, he'll still be doing it.
Okay. Tom and I are going to do outreach on this budget. And so if anyone has any ideas besides the common of where we can do outreach, please let us know. So American Legion, VFW, PTA, the faculty meetings, the senior citizens. Don't assume we know because we're both new. We'll take them all, and we'll go, and we'll take you with us.
And can I ask a clarifying question of the board now? So now that you've moved through that step, do you want to take that next step and vote on the dollar amount tonight?
I will make that motion to, that you said, that for the 20...
Barb had it in front of her. I can fill in the dollar amounts. She's got it.
Okay. Approve the 14-15 budget. Recommend the motion of the 14-15 budget in the amount of 26,396,477.
.97.
.97. Represented two, is that 2.36 increase?
2.63.
At 2 point, oh, sorry, it was written wrong. 2.63 increase to be approved as presented.
Second. Can I make just one suggestion? So for the ballot, can we just make it 480 as opposed to 477.97? It's $2.03.
Yes.
Thank you.
She's got to read that number again.
Yeah, he's got to read it again. Go for it, Paul.
Is that, that's 26 or 36?
26.
26.
I should have wrote 26,396,480.
It's still the same percentage. That $2 is not going to change the percentage. It'll still be the same percent.
He just gave you $2.03, just so you know.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Good job, guys. They deserve a hand, guys, honestly.
I should have looked at it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I motion that we enter executive session to discuss superintendent contracts.
What about the meeting next week?
Oh, no, it's, yeah, no, he's right. Why don't you finish that one and then don't adjourn, and then answer Paul's question about the meeting next week. It's a great question.
Okay, so I motion that we enter executive session to discuss the superintendent's contract.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So then, future meeting, is there a motion on the table regarding a meeting for next Tuesday?
I make the motion that we cancel that meeting.
I mean, you don't really need it.
No, you don't need it.
No, it's a regular board meeting, isn't it?
No, it's not.
The following week's a regular board meeting.
Oh, okay.
22nd, I believe it is.
Anybody want a second? Paul's motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
So the next regular meeting, Barbara helped me, April 22nd, no bat meeting, 7:00 PM. Thank you for coming.